Hey Jonathan.
Yes.
Can you forward me a copy of the ordinance, the least one?
Which one?
The first one on the agenda, the least one.
Yeah.
I've got it on my personal laptop, but I have my work laptop at my mom's house.
Send it to your work email?
Yeah. All of the documents, I've reviewed everything, but they're sitting on my other laptop.
Okay, just send it.
Great, thank you.
Six thirty-one?
Yep.
Yep, I think we're good to go. Just want to remind everybody that these meetings are recorded. So if you participate in the meeting, you're giving your permission to be recorded. Just a reminder of that, and we'll start having Karen do roll call.
William Clevinger.
Here.
Bill Githens.
Here.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Sally Richardi.
Here.
Rich West.
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you Karen. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the previous meeting.
This is Rich, I would move that we approve the minutes from, I believe it's the May twenty-sixth meeting.
It's Bill Githens, I second.
Okay, so Rich first, Bill Githens the second. Roll call, we're all in favor.
Mr. Clevinger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Abstain.
Ms. Richardi.
Hi.
Ms. Mr. West.
Aye.
Four ayes and one abstain.
Thank you Karen. Next on the agenda, we have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty hyphen zero zero three, amending the organization of the Culver Police Department. We're on a, please mute your phones if you can and your computers, so we don't hear background noise.
Jenny, I'm going to mute everyone, and then if you want to unmute yourself, we'll let you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, thank you Jonathan. Okay, so this is for ordinance. I think we should probably have a reading of the ordinance, just because we're on a phone call and it's hard to have. Fairly short ordinance anyway, so this is an ordinance amending and restating ordinance nineteen ninety-nine slash zero zero three regarding the organization of the Culver Police Department. Whereas the Culver Town Council established the size and structure of the Culver Police Department in local ordinance nineteen ninety-nine slash zero zero three, including the appointment of a chief of police, town marshal, in accordance with requirements, powers and duties allowed under Indiana Code thirty-six hyphen five hyphen seven hyphen one. And whereas the Culver Town Council will amend the number of full-time deputy marshals designated in the department, according to local ordinance nineteen ninety-nine hyphen zero zero three, to reflect current sharing plan previously approved by the town council at a public meeting. Now therefore, being ordained by the common council of the town of Culver, that the following is hereby adopted by the town council regarding the structure of the police department. From and after the date of enactment of the ordinance, the number of full-time deputy marshals in the town, shall be four plus the town marshal, pulling a total of five full-time police officers in the department. Number two, all other requirements, powers and duties of the town marshal and deputy marshal shall remain unchanged from previously adopted ordinances, policies and procedures. Passed and adopted today, today of course is the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any comments from Jonathan, Karen, Wayne, or the town council members on this?
This is Rich, no comment.
This is Bill Githens, no comment.
I have no questions. Sally.
Jonathan, Karen, or Wayne, anything?
The other thing I was going to suggest is, I mean, for future use, even fifty years from now, I mean, how much is the town going to grow? Do you really want to have a number in there? Because it's not going to change anything, I mean.
Yeah, a number in terms of the ordinance number? Or the number five?
Yeah, like you say, if twenty, twenty years from now, the town flourishes and they decide to increase the department, now you're going to, whoever is here at that time is going to have to go back through and re-change the ordinance again. I guess, do you really want a number, or is it that detrimental, you know?
Yeah, I don't know, is this just because we approved adding a fifth officer?
What's that?
Are we doing the ordinance because we approved adding the fifth officer?
Yeah, because the ordinance currently says, uh, three, I think.
Plus the marshal, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, I think what Wayne's saying is, right now it is the size of the department set by ordinance, and so this would basically just to, be to make the ordinance match what the council had previously planned. I think Wayne's just saying, do you want to necessarily limit or require it to be a certain size, or do you just want to say, you know, that it will no longer be limited to four members and will be set at the discretion of the town council, or something like that, right Wayne?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I see your point.
Yeah, if the town grows, I mean, how do you know you're not going to want to add somebody on twenty years from now? Have six people, or seven, or, you know.
Sure.
Who knows, you know? I mean, it's important to have it sound like it is.
Yeah, Jim, any input on that from you?
Well, in your salary ordinance, how many slots do you have for deputies?
Four. Well, three technically.
You know, you can always, you can always amend your ordinance, but I would recommend that you, you match your, this ordinance to the salary ordinances, to the slots for, for the number of deputies. But if you want to do it as the discretion of the town council, I guess that, that would be okay. It'd be much work for Jonathan to do this amendment.
Could the wording be changed to Wayne suggests that it just references the salary ordinance?
Well, the way the salary ordinance is written, it says, like, town marshal, deputy town marshal, and then there's the third category for all the other guys. So really, the way our salary ordinance is written right now, you can have ten guys, because everyone that's not, you know, the marshal or the deputy marshal just falls under that third category on there.
As far as I'm concerned, it's just whatever way you want to handle it, whether you want to require going through another ordinance every time, or whether you want to set it so that you just can do it at your discretion, town council's discretion.
Any comments from the council about amending it to do that?
I would.
Or any motions at this point?
I am recommending it, again, the salary ordinance is what funds the positions. And that's what the council determines annually when you do the budget or revised salary ordinance. So, I mean, I would suggest amending it to something like that.
Okay. Rich, is that a motion to make an amendment and approve it with the amendment on first read?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second to Rich's proposal to amend it with that language and pass on first read?
Sally, I'll second to that.
Okay, so Rich's motion to make the amendment, and Sally has seconded. Roll call, Karen?
May I just clarify that the, the amendment is to refer to the salary ordinance? For the number of officers?
It's, it would refer to the salary ordinance for the number of officers budgeted by the council.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clevinger?
Did we lose you, Bill?
Okay, Mr. Githens?
No.
Is there, Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Richardi?
Aye.
So that, Mr. West?
Aye.
So that's three ayes, one no, and one, I would say abstain.
Mr. Clevinger, are you back yet? I'm just looking to see if his phone number's on the list. I think we might have lost him, Jonathan.
Is he, he's not two four eight? Maybe this is him.
Oh, hi.
Bill Clevinger, are you there?
Alright.
It says no response on my screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's his email invite, though. If his phone number had called in, it would be on the list there. I, I don't know which one's his number offhand by looking at him. Wonder if one of them.
Once, once we declare this vote, could we talk again about the alternative meeting time, and maybe, I had dropped off also for a minute, but we reconnected, and I'm thinking, if somebody drops off, we may text Jonathan and let them know that.
Yeah. Okay. We'll give you a minute here, Jonathan, to see if you get him.
Yeah, let me try and just call him.
This is Bill Clevinger, I'm sorry, I can't take the call at this time, however.
I don't know what Roberts would say about it, but can we defer the final vote on this, and see if he connects later in the meeting?
Yes. Okay, so let's talk about if, if we can't get this meeting to go through with the majority of us here. What about reconvening a week from today if, if needed? We need time to re-advertise, I would assume.
I guess, Karen, when Karen and I were discussing, I think if we announce it in this meeting, we can continue it without forty-eight hours' notice, is that right, Jim?
Yes, if, if you're basically, that's the same meeting, you're just resetting it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were trying, some time this week still, at six thirty.
So like, Thursday night, instead, if we can't make it, can everyone do Thursday?
I can.
I can.
That works for me.
Okay, so we now at least four of us can do Thursday, six thirty, if we can't leave the meeting. Alright.
And I still don't see Bill, I sent him a text and got voicemail on his cell phone, so.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have review of information on establishing, establishing a municipal electric utility. I know some of us have been involved in, in conversations about this, so, Jonathan, I assume you want to walk through the council and the public, give us a sort of an executive summary of this?
Sure. So Paul DiBenedictus from CRC and I did some research about the possibility of establishing our own municipal electric utility, and purchasing the service territory from our current electric provider. We, we met with a municipal utility rate consultant, and he did some analysis for us, his name is Buzz Crone of Crone and Associates CPAs. And our, our conclusions were that there, there could be real value to residents, to businesses, nonprofits, in our current electric service territory of exploring this. Some of the biggest electric users in our area, we also met with them and provided them some of the information we'd started collecting, and got some information back from them on how much electric they use in that. We think there's a real, real interesting opportunity here to pursue, so, meeting with Buzz and kind of going through that information, we're thinking realistically, if we would move forward with it, we would, if we could establish our own municipally-run utility, even after purchasing, hold on one second, I've got Bill Clevinger here, I think. Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
Had him for a second, and I lost him again.
Something must be going on with his phone.
Yeah. Anyway, I was saying, we think we could save approximately ten percent on electric rates by pursuing this municipal-run utility, rather than having the service distribution and power purchased from NIPSCO. So our next step would be approval of a small budget for legal and financial advising services from either the town council or the redevelopment commission, or some combination thereof, and to proceed with establishing a committee to enter into discussions with NIPSCO. Honestly, I think a budget of under five thousand, just for the consulting fees, would get us started to just initiate those discussions with our electric provider. And just wanted to bring it up tonight as a discussion item. I'll also visit with the CRC about it at their next meeting. Like I said, Paul's been really involved, I know all the council members have had a chance to talk to Buzz and go over the, the financial information. And I'll follow up with it and ask for a vote to pursue those discussions, I guess, at the next meeting, if there's consensus to do so.
Just a comment on, on it, Jonathan, I think the ten percent, if I recall in the discussion with Buzz, is a conservative estimate, and it doesn't, the other additional savings potential is that it, it cuts down, or it avoids future NIPSCO invoices, which you can pretty much bank on. So, and whatever the rate will be, as long as we can control the expense side of it, you know, the future increases besides the ten percent savings will be compounded.
Yeah, I have the same, same impression you did, Rich, from the information that he gleaned for us. And I'm very interested in pursuing it. Could be a huge cost savings, not just to residents, but all of the businesses as well. And some of those, in a very significant way.
Well, in the town too.
Small upfront investment now to, to do some research on this and put together a task force that might help negotiate with NIPSCO would be ideal. Jonathan, are you hoping to, I know you're going to talk with the CRC as well, but do you want to gauge the interest in the council tonight? Just so you know where the interest lies with the town council?
Sorry, Jenny, could you repeat it?
Did you want to go ahead and, and gauge the interest of the town council as of today?
Yes.
Because I, I know I absolutely want to move forward with it myself. Rich, it sounds like you're interested in doing the same.
Yes, I, if we're doing a straw poll on this, I definitely would support the initial investment of, of funding further investigation and a consultant on this, and, and move forward if it still looks well, as well as it does now.
Do you want to go ahead and form that into a motion?
Jenny, I just don't want to see the five thousand go to ten, fifteen, twenty, and at some point in time, you know, it doesn't become feasible for us to do this, because I just don't know how many other entities have entered into these agreements, and, you know, what's the, what's it look like? I know Paul and them have done, you know, some talking, but I just like to see figures.
Okay, Sally, any comments?
I'd be interested in pursuing it. See, especially if it's, you know, under five thousand, to pursue it, and see what we get. That amount of money, we can always reevaluate at that time.
Yeah. Mr. Clevinger, did you happen to come back? Bill Clevinger, are you on the line yet? Okay.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could make a suggestion, maybe Monday is a CRC meeting, and maybe if you had a proposal together by then, and then we meet, the council meets again two weeks from tonight. So, and if CRC does something, we'll bring it back to the council as a joint effort, two weeks from tonight. Do you think there's a more pressing timeline than that?
Um, I, I mean, I don't know that we have to have a joint meeting, I just want to keep both groups involved and aware of what's going on. I'm, I mean, I, I guess I was just thinking, bring it to that meeting on Monday and see what their thoughts were, and if we need to schedule a joint, go from there.
I wasn't suggesting necessarily a joint meeting as much as a joint venture on it, just.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
That, we either split the funding or whatever. I mean, I think the businesses definitely would benefit from this. And the town itself would, if you look at our electricals, you know, a ten percent savings would be significant, so.
Yeah.
I would agree, this is Bill Githens, I would agree if that's what we do, is to split it between, you know, fifty-fifty between CRC and the town, at least initially, and see where we go.
Jenny, if I could address Bill Githens's comments, I, I think it's contemplated by Jonathan and Buzz, and I guess myself, that, that we would basically just have a group strategize on a reach out to the NIPSCO representatives, and we would hopefully know very, very early on, you know, where we stood feasibility-wise. And then a better idea too, is to come back and say, here's what we're looking at administrative costs.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, for that comment.
Okay, no problem.
So for now, Rich, do you want to just withdraw the motion, and we wait for the CRC meeting, and at least Jonathan knows the council's interested in moving forward with this?
Yeah, and it wasn't so much emotions, it was suggesting that if Jonathan has a proposal together for CRC on Monday, then we can come back to the council with the results for that, that action on Mon, two weeks from tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, thanks for the summary, Jonathan. Next on the agenda, small business utility debt relief request, I believe the application deadline was early June. So Jonathan, can you give us an update on that?
Uh, yeah. Received eight applicants, totaling four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. So some of the guidelines we came up with were a maximum award, or basically debt relief of one thousand five hundred dollars over a three-month period. And we, as far as which businesses we targeted, we really used the same guidelines that we did for the small business grant program. And like I said, I believe it was eight total applicants, a total of four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, and it was limited to the, it was, you know, the maximum was one thousand five hundred, or whatever their total water and sewer invoices were for that three-month period, so if they had a lower amount, then that, that was the maximum amount we would award.
Okay.
And that was Karen during night that reviewed those.
Alright, great. And I assume you're recommending we approve each of those with, for that total that's under five thousand?
Yep, that is my request.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve, or does anyone have any questions?
This is Sally, I'll make a motion to, please say.
This is Bill Githens, I'll second the motion, I just think the amounts in the, in, in the businesses should be read and individually and put into the minutes.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clevinger? Mr. Githens?
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Ms. Richardi?
Aye.
Mr. West?
I'll abstain, one of the applicants is the Culver Cove, and I have a, a partnership interest in, in that entity, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else on the utility relief program, Jonathan?
Uh, no.
Alright. Let's move to the regional stellar plan update. You are going to handle this?
I see Bill's back in, Bill, I don't know if you're on a computer. I, I did set them all to mute, because we had that background noise, and now I, if there's a way to unmute them, it's beyond me. It's, looks like it's still got you on that, I think on your computer, if, if you're in front of the computer, if you click the microphone, you should be able to unmute yourself, I don't think I've permanently set it that way, but if you're there and, and that middle taskbar, the microphone button would unmute you, I, I saw you dropped out and got back on, so.
Alright, for the regional stellar plan update, I think I can let you all know, the first quarterly meeting with the state agencies is this coming Thursday. There's a newsletter that will come out tonight with the status update for each of the projects in the regional stellar plan. That will go out to the Crossroads team tomorrow, as well as the state agencies. Just so you all know, most of the projects that are underway, happened to be OCA projects, the indot applications for each of the communities is being filled out, so that's still in the beginning stages. But a couple of the projects have started with OCA applications being turned in. That happens to be this Freeman Street Gate project, the Reese Theater is very close as well. So you'll start seeing some things happening across the county that are coming out of the regional stellar plan. As far as Culver goes, in terms of that plan, Jonathan's been working on the indot application process, get that turned in, and that for the trail project. OCA projects won't come until later in the implementation of stellar, we're, we're further out of the schedule due to our max dollars over a long period of time. So that's pretty much, that's that, the quality of life plan is. The Quality of Life Plan is also going to be sent out to the team. Hopefully we'll have a completed Quality of Life Plan sometime next month that would contribute to town councils, et cetera. And then also the master trail plan for the county is getting close to where it's going to go out for as well. So those are two countywide plans that uh, you'll see sometime this summer, I'm sure. I don't have any, Jonathan, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just like you said Jenny, um, that the end dot application that um, I believe everybody signed off on maybe last meeting, uh, that's been submitted to MACOG. They were going to give it a first review before turning it over to end up. And then um, I think this is related, I don't know if it's still, I think it's technically a, a regional stellar project. Uh, the message board signs. Jenny and I were on a brief call this morning about location for those, so the county has been awarded an OCA grant for uh, an electronic message board sign, and they're going to be placed throughout communities throughout the county, including one in Culver. And I think we just wanted to get uh, council input. Our, I think Jenny and I, and originally Marty Osterbahn was working on this, and um, I think I'm gonna pick up from him here pretty soon on that, uh, kind of taking over that. And we had discussed most likely the um, Culver Community Schools around the corner of the State Road 10 and School Street as an, as an ideal location. I think Jenny maybe had a brief conversation with Karen Schuman about it, and we need to follow up and get their okay, but uh, that was kind of what we were thinking as far as location. I guess I'd take any other input or thoughts on that before we give that suggestion, suggestion to Shannon MacLeod, who's the grant administrator on it.
Jonathan, can these be portable signs?
Um, it sounded like uh, with one exception, they're trying to keep them all essentially the same uh, for bidding and design purposes. And they're pretty large, uh, I believe eight to 10 feet tall, 12 feet across, something like that. Does that sound close Jenny?
Yeah, yeah. And the idea of um, putting it out there on 10 was to catch traffic. Coming from 10 to 17, that intersection, a lot of traffic just heads north. Doesn't realize we have an entire downtown area. So to point people down Ohio, well, School Street technically, um, toward downtown Culver, uh, have some messaging out there was one of the thoughts. Certainly be open to another location as well. I'd like to get feedback from the Main Street Visitor Center organizations because um, they will, they will get to do some messaging on the board. Um, and I believe each community will have control of messaging, but there's very likely to be an inter-local agreement between the county, Marshall County Tourism in each of the communities. Because the county and Marshall County Tourism have some match dollars in this project. And they want to be able to communicate countywide, um, to cross-promote tourism events, to also communicate about things like COVID. Uh, one of the reasons we received some COVID grant dollars is because they thought this project, if we had had these message boards in place, it would have been a lot easier to communicate with all of our towns, um, and the city of Plymouth, consistent information about testing sites, um, about the lockdown areas that um, are going on lockdown, you know, just anything COVID related. Um, and so that's one reason we were able to get some grant dollars to get this project done quickly. Um, in the event that there would be a second wave or another period of time uh, where we would be on lockdown, these message boards would have been one helpful way to communicate. So we will have some sort of inter-local agreement that will allow the county and Marshall County Tourism to be able to use these message boards across the county as well. Um, and they've got, they've got dollars in it, so that's part of the reasoning behind that. And it's also a project Crossroads team conceived of a more collaborative type of communication.
Locally, I would, I would suggest that the local management of it be under the visitor center. Um, I think especially the coordination with the Marshall County Tourism piece of it.
Yeah, and honestly, Rich, I think that will be up to us as a council.
Okay.
To decide how we want that to work, and then the council and Argus can decide for Argus and so on. As long as whoever is in charge of messaging using the board um, agrees to the inter-local agreement with the county and tourism. So yeah, the council could just authorize that usage. Um, and it just be town property in our right of way. And certainly, uh, Jonathan and, and our town employees would have the ability to message out to our community as well.
Does that actually end up on our right of way or the school's property? Or is it not determined yet?
Yeah, not determined. I, I think being on the highway um, to get it facing, just kind of looking at GAS and stuff, I, I think the best option's probably on their actual property rather than uh, obviously trying to get end dot permission to put it in the state right of way, or ours on School Street. I think working with the school on their actual property is probably the best bet.
I think they've got electricity out there, um, already from one of their signs, um, which will uh, likely save on installation costs. Um, and I think what's going to happen is the signs will get purchased with the grant dollars, then the matching dollars from tourism and the county will pay for the installation of the sign. But I believe each town will probably be responsible for their own landscaping. Um, it'll depend on how, how expensive it is to install the sign. Uh, there might be leftover local match dollars to contribute to landscaping, but we don't know that yet until we get a cost. And Shannon MacLeod is the grant administrator working on that. So we'll certainly have more information, but right now her, her um, urgency is more about where are you going to locate the signs because she has to do um, of environmental assessment, and this will tell her, she's like an aerial shot of where we end up putting it. So I, I was thinking ideally what we could do is authorize Jonathan to work with um, say Tracy and Danielle and Karen Schuman. Maybe they can all get together, collaborate a little bit, and figure out location wise. Um, we perhaps authorize Jonathan to make that decision based on input. Any thoughts on that?
This is Bill Githens, I'm agreeable with that.
I'll second that motion by Bill.
And I'm gonna make a note here, um, thank you to Jamie for sending me this. Uh, I've never been on the phone call into this, but she says if you hit star six after I've been muted you, that should unmute, so. Again, Bill, if you're on the phone, um, if you're still on the phone, star six should unmute you. Thank you, Jamie.
Am I unmuted now?
Yeah, there we are.
All right, welcome back, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
I think um, the motion is um, to authorize Jonathan to collaborate with the visitor center and the school to come up with the location for the sign. And I believe Rich West seconded that motion. Right?
Right.
Yes.
Karen, could you do roll call for that?
Mr. Clevenger?
Hi.
Mr. Githens?
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe?
Hi.
Ms. Ratchardi?
Hi.
Mr. West?
Hi.
All in favor?
Great, thank you Karen. Jonathan, just get back to us if you need anything regarding that. Anything else on the regional stellar plan, Jonathan, or do you want to move on to our stellar plan?
Yep.
Justin, can we move back to the votes, um, as long as we have everybody on the line with the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so Bill Clevenger, there was a motion earlier to approve the ordinance with some amended language that would allow the police department to be set up with the number of officers they need per salary ordinance as budgeted by the town council. So if the town council budgets for five police officers, and it's in the salary ordinance that way, they don't have to keep coming back to amend the ordinance. So Mr. West suggested that we amend the ordinance to be that way. There was a second to approve that motion. Uh, and we did a roll call, but you weren't there to be able to vote. So we wanted to allow you to vote yea or nay to that.
Nay.
Okay, thank you. So Karen, was there anything else that, um, trying to think of what came after that?
Um, there was a small business utility debt relief.
Yeah. So Bill Clevenger, the uh, small businesses that applied for the application for debt relief, there were eight.
Aye. I vote aye.
Okay. All right, thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Jenny, this is Jim Clevenger, if I may interject, I thought Bill Githens suggested that the companies receiving the uh, the al, the, the request be uh, read off as, as well as their numbers. Was that not correct, Bill Githens?
Yes, that was my statement.
And I, and I don't think that was done, and I, I think that was a pretty good idea for the, you know, the town to know who applied and what the town gave as far as a uh, granting a relief.
Okay.
I've got them if you want me to read them.
Yeah, Jonathan, please do.
Uh, Culver Coffee Company, 70607. Culver Cottage, $390.77. Culver Cove, 1,500. Uh, Lake House Grill, 90152. Legacy Salon, $167.17. Uh, Elizabeth's Garden, $185.16. Lucretia, uh, $54.25. And Main Street Studio, $227.33.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
And that was for a total of 4,632.27.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thanks again, Jim.
All right, stellar plan update is next on my list.
Yep, I'm going to share my screen here, can you guys see that? Yep. Okay. Just wanted to show off a couple pictures here as far as updates on projects. Um, got a lot of stuff happening over at the paddocks. Uh, this was from the quarterly report that I submitted last week to uh, OCA and Endi and all the stellar agencies. We have that meeting, a quarterly meeting with them. It'll just be done as an online and phone call this Thursday coming up. Uh, but you can see here, top left is the first townhome buildings that were started on in Culver, just 505 Cavalier Drive. See the exterior siding, exterior is complete on those, as well as garage doors and uh, siding on the back. Looking close to completion on the outside. And then scrolling down, uh, they're up to framing on the fifth building, uh, which I believe is another townhome. They've done a few of the apartment ones in between there. Uh, they're just moving consecutively as they finish up that particular section of the one building, moving right on to the next, and it seems to be moving right along real well. So just wanted to share a couple of those pictures that I had uh, seen posted online. Think of how to turn this off and flip back to my other thing. Yeah, as far as our projects, um, you know, a couple other updates, the Beach Lodge, obviously is at substantial completion. Uh, Cavalier Park, um, in that report, let them know that the, the trail's nearing completion. Restroom building is about 95% complete. Uh, playground equipment's installed there, and we're anticipating a substantial completion date on that project of uh, June 30th or sooner. As far as end dot projects that we have, uh, they're all generally in the environmental review phase. And uh, Troy Group's working to finalize stage three design of all of those over the next few months. The Lake Max Trails project, as you guys know, is kind of the furthest behind of the three. Uh, it's just a little bit longer planning project because it will require some purchase of property from some landowners. But you guys got that full copy of the report for, for OCA. Guess that's pretty much it. If you guys had any questions about the report that I turned in, I guess I'd take those now.
Any questions for Jonathan?
I'd just add that currently our Beach Lodge ribbon cutting is still scheduled for June 20th. Uh, they've had some changes at OCA with their staff. Uh, Michael Senet's no longer running the uh, um, stellar program. They're, basically the stellar program's on hold for this year. Uh, so I let our community liaison know and Matt Crouch know that we've rescheduled for June 20th. I still kind of have some concerns about, you know, doing those types of events right now that, while they're fun, uh, you know, just with public health issues. Not sure if it's the best route at this point, but um, it'll be on the agenda for our discussion with them on Thursday, whether to still go in person. Um, that's still, I guess what we've got planned, but uh, we'll discuss it with them too and get their thoughts and, and go from there. But uh, on the phone today, kind of final updates. The big thing left there is landscaping, of course, and um, uh, confirmed with a, a few folks at Michiana that uh, their subcontractor will definitely be there and get it finished, and it's currently scheduled for Saturday, so. Um, it's, they're telling me it's only about a one, one and a half day project to do the landscaping, so. Looking forward to see that um, wrapped up over there.
Hey Jonathan, if it helps, um, I do think we should encourage a later ribbon cutting date with OCA. Even if we follow the governor's guideline, um, things aren't supposed to be quite that opened up until later in July. So my own thought is, you don't know if you're going to have 100 people show up to tour a building or not. So I think we should just kind of push back on them and say, hey, look, you know, um, I know they're doing the, the meeting this Thursday as a Zoom call with the regional stellar team, so they obviously didn't want an in-person meeting for even that smaller group. Uh, and I, I just think it might be a good idea to push it out some. Um, and that would also give time to complete that landscaping and punch list, and I don't know, give us a, a minute to think.
Uh, yeah, I spoke with Jerry White about it, our community liaison this last week, and I mean, he, he said they're comfortable with whatever we want to do, that they want to be there for it and celebrate it if we have it in person. Um, I also talked about possibly just doing some kind of online announcement for now. And they, they open to whatever we want to suggest, so it's really up to council. If you guys want to, I mean, I thought about, you know, for the Walkable Communities Award, you know, we did a short uh, Zoom video, uh, I thought about, or I'm sorry, our teams and recorded it. I thought about just doing something like that for now, and then um, allowing kind of the in-person thing down the road.
Jonathan, I agree with you and Jenny, I just think uh, until the governor totally uh, lifts all the restrictions, putting this off for July or even August, uh, get the building, you know, as complete as we can get it, get the punch list uh, totally done. I think that would be uh, much more agreeable to the public so they can see a finished project rather than telling them uh, we still got stuff to do. I just think it makes sense to do it that way.
This is great, I agree with that.
Okay, sounds like we all kind of have a consensus on that, so we'll, we'll give you some, let you push back on them on that. I also hate getting the public so excited about a building that we can't have a huge gathering in at this point.
Yeah. Well, I, what if folks think about, maybe we do the video and some more pictures and photos and try and put those up before then and work on rescheduling.
Jonathan, I like that idea. I think that's great. Do a Zoom video, put pictures up, you know. Jonathan, I like that idea, I think that's great, do a Zoom video, put pictures up, you know. People can view it online, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, everybody.
Great.
And that's all I had for Stellar.
All right, thanks Jonathan, we'll move on to your town manager's report.
All right. Um, as many of you probably noticed, you, our Osterbahn and Sons uh, painting has been in town, uh, getting started on some wayfinding signs. If you noticed, uh, circles through town in different colors with no text and wondering what they're pointing to. Uh, they are coming back to finish the text, right now it's just the colors themselves. So hopefully by the end of the week, it'll be a little, you're headed with those. Um, they, they kind of switched up originally, they told us they do one at a time and finish each one. But uh, once they got on site and kind of started to figure things out, it, it was just, made more sense for them to uh, do each one and then they're gonna come back and, and, and finish um, the text separately, so. Uh, I don't think they'll be here tomorrow because of rain, but they should be wrapping up Thursday and Friday. The next item was trash rates. Uh, our new contract with Republic Services uh, for trash is scheduled to take effect July first. Um, when our current contract expires, currently per household, we're paying fourteen dollars and nine cents. Uh, and then plus a one dollar administrative fee. On July first, that base rate will jump up to fifteen dollars that we'll have to pay. Um, so the difference per month is, in terms of the total invoice the town will receive is seven hundred and nine dollars. Uh, if we don't adjust the rates by July first, that uh, that fund will go down by seven hundred and nine dollars a month, basically. Uh, last, I think we discussed it, and Karen, correct me, but I think Ballpark, there was a balance in the trash fund um, from that administrative fee building up over the last decade of around ninety thousand dollars. So reasonably, we could um, you know, keep the rates the same and, and let that fund go down a little bit if we wanted to. Um. You know, they'd take a while at seven hu- seven hundred and nine dollars a month before that became a huge issue with that balance. But um, I guess my thought was to uh, take a little bit of time with it and look at, you know, early twenty twenty one as we could get started on rate changes in the fall and, and have them take effect maybe early twenty twenty one was my thought.
Jonathan, my question is with that fifteen dollar fee, does that eliminate right now the administrative fee? So that's, it'd just be a straight fifteen bucks?
No, so the, the fifteen dollars is in replacement of the fourteen dollars and nine cents. The one dollar administrative fee was something that was set by town ordinance, that's a fee that's not paid to Republic. That's one that we keep in our account um, for costs associated with managing the trash program. Uh, we've never actually done anything with it, uh, we've talked about possibly in the future using it uh, to help offset uh, some of the deputy clerk salary who often helps coordinate um, some of the trash related stuff. Or, or also, you know, someone in our utilities department that does the same work. But uh, no, so the fifteen dollar raise, assuming we would want to keep it in the ordinance that way, you would still have the additional one dollar administrative fee.
That's my question, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, based upon like, the uh, comments that Jim um, gave today on the contract, can we make those revisions and bring it back for our next meeting to authorize sign in before July first?
Yeah, I, I saw Jim's note, I didn't read his comments yet, but um, I will be in touch with them and hope to have a draft everyone can approve at the next meeting. I'm not, the, the meeting, or as far as the agreement goes, I mean, we've already accepted that, that was our low bid. It's just a matter of timing the price change for the resident. So no matter what, we're gonna start paying fifteen dollars a month July first. It's just, when do we pass that cost on to the residents?
And it sounds like your recommendation is we look at that, this fall potentially for next year. And are we comfortable taking on that extra monthly cost for now? I personally uh, have no problem with doing that. Anybody else have an issue with doing that?
I would agree.
I agree.
This is Rich, I agree.
Okay, so we'll leave, leave the utility bills or the trash bill alone for now. Uh, and we'll take a look at it this fall in terms of whether or not we need to do an increase.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to do that or?
Well, we're not changing any uh, rate ordinance, so I, I don't need to.
Okay. Um, okay, if we're good, the next item I had was uh, an employee temperature screening policy. So we did order some no-touch thermometers and have them in place for each department. And I sent around, you know, an outline of what we'll do, it's pretty basic, but just having a cutoff point. Say, I think it's a hundred point four degrees Fahrenheit. If employees uh, test over that, we would isolate them here for thirty minutes at their, away from the other employees, retest themselves, and if they still have a fever and show symptoms, we'd send them home. And at that point, they'd be eligible for the pandemic leave as long as uh, this health crisis is still going on. Um. And it's modeled after what we found in a couple of other communities, um, EMS departments and, and cities and towns, so. Any questions on that? If not, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the employee temperature screening policy.
This is Rich, I would so move.
Bill Clevenger, seconds.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Givens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Uh, the next item is adjustment of beer garden dates and concert dates for the park. Uh, back in the fall, we approved a set of three dates. Because of COVID nineteen and um, gathering restrictions, we've moved some of the dates. Already pushed one back and I'm just asking that the council consider revising the dates that were approved to have the beer gardens, which does take a council motion. Uh, the revised dates, uh, Amber is suggesting for us are uh, June twentieth, July eleventh, and August seventh. And I just asked for a motion from the council to approve revising those dates.
I assume that June twentieth would be with limited number of people for governor's orders, right?
Yeah, the first one will be limited to fifty attendees and the second and third, currently, we're gonna limit to seventy five.
This is Rich, I move that we authorize moving the dates that we had previously approved for those events um, to the ones you just listed.
Do you have a second?
Now, this is Sally, because I have a second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Givens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Uh, next item is, yep, uh, a special event request from the RHI Foundation for an adaptive ski clinic on the, on the beach, um, July twenty third and twenty fourth. This would be their third time uh, doing this here in the town of Culver. The only thing they're really considering, I think a little different than years past, to have a band at the East Pavilion at the end of the day on Friday and some food down there. Uh, we're still kind of working on the details, but I would ask for approval uh, for the event itself. And um, you can either authorize Amber and I to review the band and food situation, or I can bring those back to you at a later date, either's fine with me. But I'd just like to let them know that they're okay to proceed with planning for that date.
Do we also need, John, this is Rich, do we also need to waive any fees associated with that since it's a non-profit organization? For using the Pavilion?
No, for them, we still have charged the fee, Rich, because they do use the Pavilion and a significant amount of the beach. And they also take up the uh, courtesy pier for part of that day. So it's a pretty substantial part of the park and they've always been able to fundraise and, and pay for it and they haven't had an issue with it, so we've still charged them.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Bill Clevenger, so moves.
Bill Givens, seconds.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Givens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Um, another special request, a Red Cross Blood Drive in the parking lot of Culver Park. That would be Thursday, June twenty fifth from two to seven. Again, I'd ask for a motion to approve the Red Cross Blood Drive event.
Bill Givens, so move.
Bill Clevenger, seconds, okay Sally.
Okay, roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Givens?
Uh.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Another special event request, uh, Kiwanis Club would like to do their street fundraiser the morning of June twentieth uh, from eight to noon. This was, this is where the volunteers are located in intersections in town to collect funds. They do it every year. Again, I asked for a motion.
This is Rich, I think we approved that request.
Bill Givens, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Givens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor.
Um, next up is, well. I think that was all, um. Couple meeting notes, uh, first, for July meetings, we had talked, um, and it's apparent that the governor's order allowing us to meet entirely online is extended through July fourth. We'd still had a little bit of discussion about possibly having a physical location for them if they wanted to. Um, I think the two best options would be either the Beach Lodge, main level, or uh, the library. Um, and just wanted to confirm that we will meet, hold all our meetings in June via Teams. But for July, I'm looking at probably like a hybrid version where we'd still meet online if people want to. Uh, assuming we're allowed to still do that for council members, but also offer a physical location if things are looking okay. Any feedback or thoughts on library or Beach Lodge?
Speaking from the library, uh, Bill Givens, uh, we will be open in uh, July and uh, I'm sure we could probably uh, have meetings there, we got rooms big enough downstairs on the first floor to accommodate.
I'm fine with either location.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. There's also, I think, at this point, uh, we, Amber, Wayne and I, another special event related item. Um, we were contacted by, um, I'm sorry, I haven't met him, I apologize if I mess up your name, I think he's on the call here. Evan, is it Dutmer? Evan, are you here?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are, is this Seven?
Oh, okay, sorry about that, yeah, so my name is Evan Dutmer, yes, thank you so much.
Uh, so Evan contacted, I, I believe Jenny, myself, and Amber Cowell about a possible demonstration uh, event that would take place in Culver Park. And I think he uh, maybe reached out to Amber first and, and she had contacted me or Evan, both of us. Uh, and originally, he was looking to hold the event um, called Black Lives Matter Culver Focused on Education, uh, demonstration in Culver Park, and he was originally looking to do it this Friday in the afternoon, I think, four to six. And I think what Amber and I both respond is that typically, you know, we have a little longer uh, review period for special events. And we were thinking, I think his idea was fine and could work at the park fine. We just wanted to maybe push it back a little bit to give a little more time to uh, review the request. So I encouraged him to join tonight and um, if council members have any questions or, I'll even actually give Evan here a minute to maybe talk about the event and what you'd like to do.
Uh, yeah, thank you so much, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So um, first, there's just a little bit of a way of introduction. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm Evan Dutmer, I teach at the Culver Academies, I teach uh, Latin. And uh, this uh, demonstration, uh, as we called it, really more kind of like a um, uh, teaching moment. Um, we're hoping, hoping it to be kind of a community dialoguing session, is born out of um, uh, feedback we've received from students and from faculty and other community members where, um, just a, a hope to be able to gather together and uh, show some uh, solidarity, a show of support for especially our black students, um, students of color in a really, really difficult time. Um, so we're hoping to do something in the park that uh, actually would have more of kind of like a, a booth feel. Um, people could come up, ask questions about, hey, what is this Black Lives Matter thing? I, I'm not so sure about it. At the same time, we would um, uh, be showing support with uh, the broader movement. Um, but it's uh, pitched less as like a protest or something, that more kind of like a community show of support. Um, we think it could mean a lot to um, our uh, black students, our black faculty of color. Um, and uh, we're hoping to um, partner with uh, community schools as well to um, kind of get a nice um, uh, family friend, family-friendly kind of like uh, education style um, event. Uh, and uh, also, it's gonna be, uh, we're hoping to have it um, kind of uh, kind of coordinated by our cultural competence and equity committee, so we'd have a good number of faculty there. Um, but we're, we're really help, happy to work with the town to find the best time for this. We're hoping to have a kind of high visibility area, so we thought the park on the lake would be um, awesome. But uh, we're really happy to work with you all and, and find what uh, you know, what seems to be a good time. Um, and uh, we're also, uh, the, the urgency side of it is um, something we're willing to um, you know, look at many options since um, we want this to be a, a movement that um, continues for a while, so thank you so much for having me.
Evan, uh, this is, this is Jenny Monroe. Um, I, I'm all for the, the idea, as long as the timing would fit within the guidelines uh, that we're having to follow for COVID. We've, we've obviously limited the number of people we're allowing on our beach. Um, we're certainly following the governor's outline for reopening. Uh, so my only concern would be from a date standpoint, um, and the number of people convening. Um, and then also, what kind of guidelines you all would promote in terms of people attending, um, you know, wearing a mask. Uh, that sort of thing. My bigger concern is the spike in number of cases we've had in the county in just the last two weeks. Uh, so from my standpoint, I'm all for um, having the event, allowing usage of the park. My only concern would be when and, and the guidelines uh, as related to COVID.
This is Rich West, I, I would concur with Jenny, I think, I, one, I think it's a great idea and I think we should applaud you for, for doing it. It's a, a creative idea and I think um, well needed. Um, but the concern about the current situation with the pandemic and size of crowds and social distancing and consistency with other things in the park would, would be my one concern, but I, um, I definitely would support the idea.
Um, Evan, do you have kind of an alternative date in mind? I know we haven't talked since originally that this Friday was thrown out, uh, do you have a tentative date in mind?
Yeah, um, so really, um, like I said, we're, we're quite, quite flexible there. Um, thanks so much for the feedback, by the way, I was gonna say a little bit about that in a sec. Um, uh, the one date that came to mind was just that Amber had mentioned, um, I think June twenty third or somewhere around then. So like maybe more toward the end of the month. Um, I think that would work very well for us. Um, I'm happy to kind of work with you all over email to find a time that seems to make the most sense, kind of um, health-wise too, to make sure this is a safe event, so um, like I said, I, I think the, the view from most of us is that um, we, we want this to- So like I said, I think the view for most of us is that we, we want this to be something that continues and lasts. So we're happy to kind of set this event at a time where we think it's safe. So, you know, like you, like you said, Jenny, I'm thinking about the spike in cases in Marshall County right now. I think we want to be really cognizant of that too. But just to kind of also go on your earlier points. We did want to make sure that as we're advertising this, that masks would be encouraged, that the tables would be spaced out. Maybe we could have some marking on the grass, just so we're able to engage in this kind of communication. And maybe have a microphone or something like that, just so it's a way for us to do this, but in a socially distanced way.
I mean, to me, that sounds reasonable, and I think we can trust all of you to do that. Any other input from the council? I think I heard from Rich, Sally, Bill, Bill.
I think it should be later in the summer, either July or August. It's Bill Githens. You know, let's get out from under the governor's current guidelines and if we're gonna allow it, let's make sure that everything applies.
This is Bill Clevenger. I concur with Bill Githens, and I think that, you know, for the benefit of what they propose to do, the later in the summer, the less restrictions we're likely to have. And I think that would, you know, benefit, you know, their cause and so forth. So I'd like to see it pushed back, you know, reasonably a time during the summer.
Jonathan, what's the date for the final phasing? I've forgotten.
Yeah, it's July 4th is the last day. So June 15th is kind of the next phase, and then July 4th is
Okay.
Plan, just to, yeah, pretty much be as normal as I get.
Evan, do you think that your, the folks you've been talking to about doing this would be open to a July date instead of June?
So I, I think that we would. I'll, we're actually having a meeting tomorrow, the cultural competence and equity committee, and do some more planning for this. If I can definitely run this by them tomorrow. I think that's great points that you've raised. So I could be in touch with you, Jenny, and Jonathan, just to send you what comes from that meeting. Like, speaking totally for myself, I think that that makes sense to try for something in July. But I would say I could relay what's kind of going on in that committee.
Yeah. I would love to attend it myself. So I, I think educating anyone and everyone on the issues that we should all be participating in is a fantastic idea. So it looks like maybe if the organizers of it are open to a July date and we all just communicate with each other, we can keep the council updated and Amber, of course, in the loop as far as the event space and that sort of logistical stuff that we can help out with. Does that sound okay with the council for now?
Bill Githens, yeah.
And so in that respect, I would ask the council to approve the event with a pending future date to be determined by the town manager, Amber Cowell, and the organizers of the event. But would like to have the vote to support the event at tonight's meeting so that Evan and Jonathan and Amber can move forward with deciding on the date.
This is Rich. I would move to approve the concept of the event and to work out the details of the date at a later point.
Okay, do I have a second?
This is Sally. I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, Karen.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Ms. Retardi.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Hi.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Evan. This is probably my longest report ever. I still have two items.
It's okay.
Thank you so much, everyone, by the way. Thanks.
Thanks, Evan. I was gonna save this for EMS, but I'll go ahead and put it because it was on my list next. Our EMS director, Deanna, resigned on Friday. It was pretty unexpected, I guess, and we weren't really given a lot of notice on it. So our, our full-time paramedics, Stephen Kobitz and Scott Erickson, have done a great job these last few days of, you know, really helping us get shifts covered, just doing the things that we needed to do to kind of pick up the slack this week. And had a meeting with both of them too. And I think our best bet as we look to fill that position, you know, is to appoint Scott Erickson as an interim director for our EMS department. And, but also split some of those duties that our director normally does between both Scott and Stephen. The three of us talked a little bit about that this morning, and we'll flesh out the final details over the next couple of days. But I think, again, that neither one, I mean, frankly, is, is, I mean, they both told me they're not interested in the position long-term, but are happy to help fill in right now and help us get through this. So I think kind of splitting the duties is our best bet. And I'd like to ask council to approve a temporary pay raise of $1 an hour for Scott and 75 cents an hour for Stephen until that full-time director position is filled effective this current pay period. And I guess I'd answer any questions on that if there are any.
Jonathan, my question is why isn't both of them a dollar?
So like I said, they will be splitting the duties, but Scott will be considered the interim director, and he will have a little bit more responsibility than Stephen will.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
If nobody else has a question, I'll make a motion that we accept Jonathan's request of the interim pay raise of a dollar for Scott and 75 cents per hour for Stephen.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Ms. Retardi.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Hi.
All in favor.
And then as a follow-up additional EMS. Last time when we went through this, about six or seven months ago, we did have a committee that reviewed applications and oversaw the hiring process. It was Marlene Muller, myself, and Kathy Hart at the time. Scott would be willing to serve on that on behalf of the EMS. But I'd also, again, like to have one or two council members if we could appoint either one or two members. I think we had two last time to be a part of that, because I do think it would be good to try and get a meeting of that group in this week if at all possible.
Bill Clevenger, volunteers.
I would recommend Sally be the other volunteer.
I have no problem with that. I was going to speak up myself.
Good.
Okay.
All right. If that works, I will be in touch with both of you. And again, just FYI, we've posted it internally. Usually for openings like this, we'll have a five-day internal notice where our own employees can apply for it. And haven't circulated it wider beyond that yet. I'm planning on doing that next week. But I'd like all of us to, to meet, you know, reach out tomorrow and try and get something scheduled for Thursday or Friday. Or early next week, I guess, if nothing else. So last item on mine was, again, related to a special event. We, I think several of the council members were contacted by members of the community over the weekend. A notice had went out, I believe, from the Lake Fest Committee about doing a firework program in the middle of the lake, Fourth of July, instead of the normal Lake Fest weekend. And a fundraiser kind of kicking off to try and pay for that. And I think there was some input from citizens on both sides of it. And I just wanted, I think the public wanted some council to have some input on that. I know as far as a special event permit, if they're doing it in the middle of the lake, there's no requirement. There's nothing that we can do as far as what happens on the lake, other than possibly advocate to some of the state agencies that would provide that permit. Our biggest concern, I guess, is at the park. And I know Amber and Wayne and I have talked about this. And I think whatever kind of position council wants to take, trying to really control or manage a crowd in the park like that is probably not practical with our staff. I think if we don't do anything, the consensus, at least amongst us, was that, I mean, we can have the volunteer deputies in the sheriff's department be present. We can have our police force there. But as Wayne likes to say, I don't think we can be the, the social distancing police on this one. If the event takes place, we just have to kind of rely on public information and asking people to make good decisions. So that's my report on it. I for comment.
Jonathan, one of the things that I think that when we were written about this, I think someone from the chamber wrote us and said that the academy was still having their fireworks. They are not having fireworks. Confirmed that with a very reliable source over there. So that is not accurate.
And I'm Jenny, I think, I think the statement was that normally the academy has the Fourth of July fireworks, right? And that they, so I think, anyway, I don't think, if I remember right, I don't think that email was saying that they were planning on having them. But normally, the academy would have them on the Fourth of July, right?
Okay.
Yeah, this is kind of in the place of that, I guess.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm wondering why we canceled Lake Fest and fireworks if we were just going to that, that obviously, of all the Lake Fest activities draws the biggest crowd to town, where you can't even park your car in town. I couldn't even get into my driveway two years ago because somebody parked in front of us. And that was fireworks night. So it's even more people than a normal Lake Fest activity from what I've seen in the past. So I guess I'm a little confused. If we were canceling Lake Fest, why are we putting this in its place, I suppose? And I know you can't answer that, Jonathan. Do we have anyone on the call that could talk to us about that? Let's go ahead and unmute everyone temporarily, Jonathan, in case there is someone on the call.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a control for that. If you're on the phone and want to speak, and I muted you at the beginning of the meeting, when I hit everyone, it's star six to unmute. Or if you're on the computer, it's in the middle bar. Just tap the microphone button and you can unmute yourself.
Okay, so anyone from the chamber speaking about this? All right, looks like we don't have anyone from the chamber. So let's get some council member input. Any of the council members have input on this?
Well, this is Bill Githens. Doesn't the DNR, DNR has control of the lake? And what is their posture on this? Or do they have one?
I believe the notice, Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were informed that they had applied for the permit for the fireworks, but it's not been awarded yet. So as far as I know, I'm not aware of any DNR restrictions that would mean that they'll turn it down or treat it any differently than they would normally. And we know that, yeah, the group organizing is familiar with that process. I would assume it would be granted by the DNR.
This is Bill Clevenger.
I, I concur with Jenny. I'm just afraid that this thing will get to the point of the magnitude that, you know, we're really not going to be comfortable with. And, you know, it's not the only event that's been going to be canceled or has been canceled because of COVID-19. And I just think that this is a burden that we just don't need at this particular time. So I'm in concurrence with Jenny.
Well, this is Bill Githens again. I concur with Jenny too and Bill Clevenger. But, you know, to me, it's, what if the DNR says, go ahead and do it? I mean, what, what, what say do we have there?
Yeah.
This is, this is Rich, just as a, I think if we as a council took a position against this, which I think it is, I think it's a well-intentioned idea. We had this discussion at the council probably six weeks ago. You know, I mean, some type of, not necessarily a celebration, but just a relief. But thought it was probably, it would be difficult to control all of the distancing issues. So anyway, where it was going is, I think if, as a council, if we agreed that we're opposed to this and sent a letter to the DNR, it may or may not have some impact. The, you know, we can't, we can't control what happens on private property around the lake. But the impact on the park, I think, is going to be huge. And I, you know, so we could say we could close the park, but how do we, you know, that, that would be, you know, that would, that would be unenforceable. So I think it's a bad idea. And I, so.
This is Sally.
It's a sticky situation in that we would all love to celebrate the Fourth of July as usual. And goodness knows, we would all like something happy and joyful to celebrate for a change. But go ahead, Sally. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
I was going to say that, you know, they've canceled the Lake Fest. They've also canceled the, you know, State Fair, the County Fair, and Argus. And I park cars through the traffic just for the Fourth of July at the academy. And you get hundreds of cars that show up. First off, you're talking manpower. And secondly, you know, there is no social distancing once you get a crowd like that. I think it's somewhat foolhardy idea.
And I don't see it as supporting the businesses either. I mean, this is at 10 o'clock at night. The merchants are not staying open that late outside of a couple of the later restaurants. I mean, people who come to town for this, I think, are coming for the fireworks. I don't know that it, it would create positive impact for the merchants.
Well, the one, the times that I've seen, you know, the cars come in, they come in early, sit and sit for an hour or so. And as soon as the fireworks are gone, there's a mass exodus going out of town. All they come for is, I don't see it benefiting the commercial district either.
Okay, well, I know when we were asked to respond to it, I did not want to speak on behalf of the entire council without council input. And I'm hearing a strong consensus on this. So I think that Jonathan and I could work together on drafting some sort of letter to that effect that we could send to the mayor, et cetera.
Before we take that action, I know Jonathan said he and Amber and Wayne have talked about it, but I wonder, Wayne, I think, or I see you're still on the call. Do you have any suggestions or any ideas or?
She fell asleep.
You what?
You still have to go home.
Well.
Amber, I muted you.
Can you hear me?
There she is.
Okay, sorry.
The question was, Amber, did you have any input as far as the Fourth of July firework proposal?
Did you, oh my gosh, sorry, my wifi is horrible. Did you guys ask about just general input?
Yes.
Is that what you asked? Okay, if I cut out, just let me know. Um, I mean, just from my perspective at least, I, I mean, there's just no way we could manage and enforce anything. I know we had talked about potentially enforcing stuff, which I guess we would, might be capable on a regular day. However, with it being Fourth of July, I just don't see that happening. Our staff is overworked on the Fourth of July, including myself, as is. Our lifeguards, we have all 12 of our lifeguards come in for about a 10-hour shift. I just, I'm not comfortable asking them to work for 14, 15 hours just to tell people to stay apart. We would also have to be asking the police department to secure the votes. We'll have issues with the traffic as well. So we are asking our town of Culver employees to do a little bit of extra work on the Fourth of July when we're already doing a lot. But that's just my perspective, if we're being asked to enforce the rules, that is. If not otherwise, I mean, I guess we could make it work. But like I said, then people would be not abiding by our social distancing rules.
All right, well, I, I think, just so that I know, each council member has weighed in. So I have a motion to authorize Jonathan and I to draft a letter to be sent to Chamber. And we could send a copy to the DNR.
This is Bill Githens, so moved.
Second from Rich.
Roll call, Karen.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Hi.
All in favor.
Okay, thanks. I know that was not an easy thing to think through, but I really felt like we needed to all go on record with an opinion. So thank you, appreciate that, everyone.
Yeah, just a, a question, I guess, to Jonathan on this. Well, well, the fireworks themselves don't require an event permit from the town. I mean, I think that this is potentially, if it goes ahead, is going to cost us a fair amount of staff overtime, I, from Wayne's department, I would guess, and the fire department and the EMS. You know, I, we may want to include in that letter something to the chamber that if you go ahead with this, you know, you, you should probably be prepared to receive a bill from the town for the additional services required to, to carry out your, your activity.
Yeah, just this background, and I think Wayne's on here, if he has anything, he can jump in. But I think he's already spoke with Rose Workman, who was the chamber secretary and on the Lake Fest Committee and has helped with the fundraising the last couple of years. And they have typically, I think, like, the Lake Fest Committee has paid for some of those volunteer officers from the county to come down and help monitor things during Lake Fest when we do have the fireworks. And I think they'd already talked a little bit about that. So that wouldn't be a hard conversation to have, I, I don't think. Wayne, did you have anything on it?
I, I spoke to Rose about it and I got a phone call into the, to the reserves at the sheriff's department. Because typically in the past, we have covered five of the piers plus the curbside pier. As far as put people on, keep people off the piers if we get a large crowd. And I was going to discuss with them about having a few extra people just to work in the park itself. And, you know, if there turns out to be a large crowd, I mean, the problem is there's no way of knowing what's going to happen. But just being prepared, she's going to check with their, their committee or whoever she's going to work with, you know? And, I mean, and like Jonathan spoke earlier, I mean, there's just no way if you get a lot of people there, we're going to be social distancing people. It's not going to work. But we've always dealt with the traffic afterwards, those kind of things.
I guess in that regard, Jonathan, should the chamber not have filled out a special permit to begin with for the park special event? Because they're obviously county, I mean, especially if they're going to promote this, you're, you're asking people to show up. Where exactly do they want them to go? That would require a permit to use the park space in that way. And in the past, the Lake Fest has required that, or they have requested that permit.
Yeah, you, I'd have to look at it again, but I hadn't thought of it that way. Usually we've only used it for when they're actually going to use town property. You know, and the event's taking place in the middle of the lake, that's not town property. But we, I mean, there's some allowance in there and some of the fees are based off, you know, whether or not we need employees present and other town-related expenses. So I could take a look at it again. That, that maybe, that might make sense that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, frankly, they talked in the email about promoting this. So if you're planning on bringing people to town, where exactly are you planning on them being? Obviously, it would be in public spaces and not on private property. So that, that special event permit would need to be filled out.
Another thing we might consider, I, I mean, I suspect the academy will not permit the barges to be put in from the academy. That's been a problem for several years because the gas tanks are at the location where they'd be put in. Last year, they were put in at the marina. I don't know how that worked. It was a much larger tow across the lake. I mean, we might want to express our displeasure with this event to the marina also. To the Culver Marina. If they don't have, my, my thought is if they don't have a place to put in the barges.
Sure.
It's, you know.
I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think they'd already discussed that with them. There's a possibility that's where they could be launching them.
Okay.
You might want to confirm that with Rose.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I, I think, you know, depending on where they launch them and whatever public spaces they're planning on using, it certainly poses a problem for Culver Academy as well, having the shoreline space that they have. And no, I mean, there's no one on campus right now, so that, that poses security issues. So I mean, all of these different issues that have been brought up, we need to express our concern to the chamber. And thank you for the motion, and we will do so.
Believe it or not, I think that's the end of the town manager report.
Wow, congratulations.
Four pages tonight.
I'm assuming we can skip the EMS report for now because you've kind of covered that. Is anyone on the call reporting on the fire department?
I think Pete's here. Pete, did you have anything?
Pete, you're on mute if you are trying to speak.
Star six if you're on the phone, Pete, but.
I'm going to go on to the police department. Anything else for you, Wayne?
No, I don't have anything right now. Oh, I do have one thing, maybe Jonathan can look into this. I had a resident who lives on State Street was requesting to know if they can get a, like, slow children sign put up. I know most signs are covered by some town organs. Well, that's more of an informational sign. The, the contingent is it's turned into a drag strip since the new paving.
Okay.
So that's all.
All right, we'll have Jonathan look into that. Anything from the park department, Amber, that we haven't covered?
I had one question, that's just in regard to the concerts. I know we're going to have limitations put on the number of patrons we can allow attend those concerts and that being inside the beer garden. I guess my question is, how, how would you guys like me to go about that? Either that be just first come, first served? I know I talked briefly to Jonathan about potentially doing ticket sales before, like issuing out 50 tickets. Because if we are going to take that route, we have to promote that so everyone has an equal opportunity to get those tickets. So I was wondering what your guys' opinions were on how we'll go ahead and administer the first 50 people into the concert.
Amber, I think, this is Rich, I would suggest the RSVPing or tickets in advance. I mean, you know what's happened on the beach side when you've gotten to 50 and there have been other people who could not be accommodated. That would just be my suggestion is to try and do something in advance.
Okay, and would it, would we have to do it then, something online? Something like Eventbrite or administering? I mean, we can also offer it in person. I'm just curious how we would go about it so that everybody has a fair opportunity to get those first 50 tickets?
I mean, we, we don't typically charge admission for.
No, 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 we don't. No, I mean, like, they'd be free.
Like a reservation in a way.
Yeah.
So they just got respite to, to Jonathan and Jonathan sends him a ticket or something.
Snail mail, every single one.
Yeah, you have to provide more than one way, you know, not everybody's on social media, not everybody.
Or if somebody isn't, you know, in town and they can't physically pick it up and they want to attend it like an online option, or if they're not online, then an in-person option.
Yeah, Amber, is there, is there a way to enter? Like, if they come to the, the window at the concession stand on Eventbrite, can we enter our own ones? I haven't used it before as a.
I can, but I don't, I'm not entirely, I think possibly.
Yeah, I, I think some mix of online and in-person makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just also afraid of people, if we're doing a free ticket online, I mean, and then they just take 10, I don't know, it's just.
Yeah, right.
I don't know.
I think you have, I mean, limited to two. You know, there are only 50 people, obviously 10 is not going to be a fair.
Well, there's also the option of delaying the June concert if the, if the band can do a later date.
Right.
You know, because you, at least you can up the number a little bit in July and August.
I don't know, I'm just thinking of options. I, I'm just, I don't know, I'd have to play around with the website at least. See if you can limit it per person. But then if you limit it per person, then can we manage it from the concession stand? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not that familiar with ticket sales.
Yeah, well, it may just be easier just to do a numbered ticket that we print off ourselves and, and keep a spreadsheet down there and a list and email them if they reserve them online or give them the paper version if they come in person.
Okay, so like, in per, if we're doing it in person, like, we can, me and the concession stand can share a list? And then if it's going to be the online auction via email?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
What I'm thinking.
Okay.
If they don't show up by, you know, five minutes after the start time, it's first come, first served at that point.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we can do that. Thank you.
Anything else for the park department, Amber?
Uh, that is all, thank you.
All right.
Can you hear, can you hear Pete now? Can I put my two cents in now? Sorry, I'm a little late.
Oh, no problem, Pete, go for it.
Uh, let's see here, quick, I don't have four pages like Jonathan, but I got a couple of things here. Parking lot approach has been completed across from the fire station. Thanks to the, the town's street department for helping out there too. As you can see, our beautiful mural is done. Still open for debate on what we're going to do with our man door as far as the coloring there, but it looks great. The latest I've heard from our truck committee is we're talking, and Jonathan probably knows more than this. We're looking at maybe early August now for the area to be delivered. There's a coming up here in the near, I think, within the next week, there's going to be a virtual tour of it. So that is progressing along nicely. And we have yet to make a decision on the fate of Fire Fest. We lacked a quorum at our last meeting because of a number of things. And, but right now, we're probably leaning to the side of what the Lions Club is going. Can't speak without a vote, but I think we're leaning that direction. And as a public safety note, I heard your message board on State Road 10. It sure be nice if you put something on there about not being legal to drive golf carts down a state highway. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Pete. So yeah, that mural looks fantastic. Do you want to let, let people know where the design from that came from?
I, I would like to if I would know that fact, but I'm embarrassed to say I do not.
Okay, that's all right.
It's greatly appreciated. It's, it's beautiful, that's all I can say.
All right, so next we have beyond the town department. Anything else for the utility department from Bob Porter?
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob. Anyone reporting from the plan commission or the BVA tonight? I'll take that as no. Redevelopment commission, Rich, anything to report from CRC?
Just that the redevelopment commission's next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, the 15th at 5:00 PM.
All right, thank you, Rich. Anyone reporting from the tree commission tonight? All right, we'll take that as no as well. So we'll move on to the clerks' report with Karen.
Yes, I have two claims over 1,500 for approval. One is for Lag Oak Electric for $1,550. And that was for the park and some work that he did for building maintenance. The other one is for Arbocman Concrete for $7,867. And that's for some concrete work for the water department.
Do you have a motion to approve the claims over 1,500, please?
Bill Githens, so moved.
Sally, Richard, you second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Hi.
All in favor. Second thing I have is a request to, or authorization to send, to file suit against 10 unpaid EMS accounts. The total would, those, these would be for unpaid bills for runs. Total is $6,815.50.
Motion to approve?
Clevenger moves.
Okay, I'll take that as a, a first from Bill Githens, a second from Mr. Clevenger. Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Githens. Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mrs. Charlie.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Hi.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Next, we have the attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Clerk Treasure. Let the record show, if you could see me, I'm wearing a tie this evening despite the fact that I'm home and on Zoom. Two, two kind of quick items. Well, we talked a little bit about the trash contract and I think Jonathan and I, after he has a chance to look at that, will continue to work on that. Got a couple of issues I think we need to get worked out on, on that matter. And then an update on the Van Hawk litigation matters. These are cases that never cease to amaze me about what weird things can happen. I learned a few days ago that the 27 Group Inc. has decided, has filed a deed to record a deed to the Foundation for. To the Foundation for Underprivileged Children Trust for both the six fourteen College Avenue property. And for the, uh, four fifteen Lakeshore Drive property. The, uh, there's some interesting things about the deed, the College Avenue deed form is almost identical to the deed that was submitted with the complaint. That six fourteen filed against, uh, uh, the town. The, except that the name has changed, the dates of when it was supposedly done are still the same. And the deed was a bit cleaned up. The original deed that was filed with the complaint was never recorded. And was missing a couple of items, but, uh, it was notarized, it was signed on the supposed same December tenth, twenty fourteen date, notarized by the same individual. So that was a bit of an interesting development. I don't know that that's bearing really on the lawsuit, but, uh. I, I, I guess you can draw your own conclusions or try to draw your own conclusions about what that was all about. And, uh, the same sort of applies on the four fifteen, uh, Lakeshore property. The legal description obviously is different. Um, but it was signed on December tenth, twenty fourteen, notarized by the same individual, uh, for that different property. Um. That shouldn't have any bearing on our foreclosure of Arlene's coming in as a reported document after the foreclosure action, so that, that should have no bearing on, on that case. There's been nobody filing appearance on that case. Um, and I will tell you that I tried to find out the, uh, the, the Foundation for Underprivileged Children Trust was listed as a Swank County, North Carolina entity. And I haven't been able to find, uh, the existence of that entity down there yet, but. Um, I just thought, uh, I might bring that to the council's attention, uh, as, uh. Interesting, interesting matters to keep, keep coming up with that, with those cases. With that, that's all I have.
Just, Jim, just as a, you probably know this already, but the College Avenue properties have been listed for sale. Um. For probably at least a month. Um, and it'd be interesting who signed the, uh, listing agreement if, uh, we could see.
Yeah, do you, you know who the realtor is that listed?
Not someone that, I'll look into that. I'll, I'll text you offline.
Okay. Yeah, actually, it would be nice if they'd sell that property because the, the transaction would require payment of Arlene that's still exists out there. Uh, as you know, Councilman, the, uh, attorney for the town hired by the insurance carrier. Filed a motion to dismiss the complaint for lack of a tort claim notice, so if the case does get dismissed. At this point, we don't have any, uh, vehicle to try and collect Arlene, uh, that exists on, on that six fourteen College Avenue property.
Um, next on the agenda, we've got a utility shut off ordinance violation. If anyone has one of those, speak up. All right, if not, I'm gonna move on to citizen input. If you have citizen input, um, you can unmute yourself and speak up.
Hi Ginny, this is Tracy Fox. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, uh, just a, a couple of things, um, just thank you, um, to the council for kind of keeping the public health of Marshall County and certain areas of Culver front and center. And your decision-making process tonight, you all heard of this, in Marshall County, but, um, they are really significantly alarming in that there, um, was an analysis done with local counties. Around Marshall County, couldn't they go Alcart and the port and also one in Michigan and, um. Marshall County stands out as one of the most significant accelerated counties that has seen a doubling of COVID rates in seven days. The next county that's closest is Alcart with a doubling every seventeen days and all of the other counties surrounding are in the improving room, so I think. Um, the more we can keep that front and center as decisions are made and as, um. A- as we're thinking about how best to, um, to open back up, that's really, really important, so appreciate your focus on that. Um, and then only the, the other one, I mean, I totally, uh, love the Firehouse mural as well, that was a joint project with. Develop Culver, CRC, Visitor Center, and I think to, to, um, answer the question about where did the image come from? I know that the, um, the entity Bridge Collective Artists worked closely with Jeff Kenny and they basically developed the. Mural based on some renditions that Jeff had of the old colonnade and then also just kind of reflecting the establishment of the fire department in eighteen forty-four, so, um. That's a great project, looks good. I just wanted to clarify that and also really appreciate your response to the, um, the fireworks. Um, issue that's really of concern on a number of fronts and Ginny, I totally agree, we all want to celebrate, I love fireworks. Um, would love to be out in the lake, but, um, that's just a really scary thought to think about having so many people in Culver when we've seen the rates that we have, so. Again, thanks for all of y'all's leadership.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Is there any other citizen input? All right, well, I will move on to council issues. Mr. Giffens, do you have any council issues? Bill Giffens, any council issues?
None at this time.
Okay, Mr. Clevenger, any council issues?
None at this time.
Mr. West, any council issues?
Just to follow on some of what Tracy was talking about in terms of the increased cases in Marshall County. I asked Jonathan to reach out again to the Marshall County Health Department to see if we could get any more specific data either by township or towns. On where we've seen the growth of those cases, um, for the second time, he's gotten no response to that request. Um, I, I understand that patient-specific information is protected by HIPAA. Um, but the overall demographic information of where cases are, are. Being confirmed as being positive, I would think. You know, as local government, we should have access to that information and data, and I guess I would ask Jim, um, you know, what perhaps to facilitate. Getting that.
You know, I can try, but, um, you know, the local health department was doing the tracing for many weeks. Uh, Lisa Letzinger with the department, I thought was doing a really nice job of that. And then, uh, the state contracted for, I don't know, some forty-three million a company to take over the tracing and. Uh, I, I don't wanna speak out a little bit and, uh, maybe Tracy actually could add to this, but. I don't think the state tracing folks are doing near the job that, uh, we were doing and, uh. I, I, I can see what I can find out, but that may be the, where I need to find, uh, the information and I, I'm a little. I guess I'm a little, uh, disheartened at, at their effort today.
Yeah, Tracy's source was Chad Tonner's, um, I think weekly, Chad is the, um, the CEO for the St. Joseph Health System. Um, and I think he was just getting data from all of the surrounding counties, um, that, I'm not sure who published that, but, um. I, I think it would be helpful to us to have data when we make decisions like this, that's.
I, I'll see what I can do, sure.
Thank you. Nothing else.
Sally Richardy, any council issues?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, um, I just have one issue and it's not really an issue. Um, I just wanted to thank the town council. Jonathan and Karen and all of the employees. Um, were sending me a beautiful blue spruce tree to plant in my yard. Uh, my father loved spruces and loved taking care of the trees. And our yard and the garden that he always had, and so it's a really awesome tribute to my dad and I really greatly appreciate it. As well as everyone's patience, um, while I was absent, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And on that note, I will ask that we adjourn to claims.
I'll move that we adjourn to claims.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Giffens.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Hi.
All in favor.
Great, thank you.
Jenny, I want to thank Karen for the, I think, almost success, well, the successful completion of the federal audit. I know it's not quite completely wrapped up, but, um, it looks like that was successful. Thank you, Karen.
It's almost done.
Your usual great work, Karen, we appreciate it. All right, everybody, have a good evening and it looks like we won't have to meet again because we got through the entire meeting without losing power. So, take care, everyone.
Good health, all.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night.